Good evening. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community School District to order, and we'd like to begin this evening with a moment of silence. And now please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and this evening Lyle Schmidt will read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thanks, Lyle. The first action item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing for the 2015-16 budget certification, and at this time I will declare that hearing open. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board in regards to the budget certification? Seeing no one, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing. Sue, thank you, and a second.
I'll second.
Thanks, it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, the hearing is closed. We'll move on to the next item, which is information from individuals and delegations. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board in something other than the budget? And if so, please come forward and state your name and address. Anyone? Alright, we're just flying through this tonight. We'll move on to our consent agenda then, and there are five items on that this evening. The minutes of the March 23rd, 2015, and April 1st, 2015, regular and special board meetings, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, the Waterloo Human Rights Commission donation to the Business Professionals of America, and the Food Service Department Iowa Association of Educational Purchasing, IAEP, purchasing agreement for 2015-2016. Are there any items that members would like to have removed?
C and E.
Item C on page seven, and item E.
Unfortunately, I have item D. That's the bills due and payable, and I'm abstaining from voting on that.
Great.
We're just on the two.
Alright. So, then, our consent agenda would consist of items B and F. And all those in favor of approving items B and F, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. I apologize, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda first.
I'll second.
Thanks, Mike, thanks, Mike. Okay. Then, all those in favor of approving those two items on the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign, and chair votes aye. Thank you. So now, we'll move on to item C, which is on page seven, personnel appointments and adjustments. And, the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Sue and Mike, and discussion.
I just wondered that this, the termination, extra duties only, what does that, sorry.
What does that mean?
It reflects a new practice and a requirement of issuing separate contracts for extra duties versus a continuing contract. In the past, as long as I've been here, a while.
A little bit.
We've issued a combined contract that had all of the extra duties, as well as your teaching responsibilities, on one contract. It was a continuing contract, so if changes came up, we would just issue a new contract and remove what needed to be removed. With the new TLC, the state requirement is that you issue non-renewable, one-year contracts. So, this reflects a change. Those are individuals who still had their extra duty this year on a continuing contract. We're terminating those contracts, so next year they'll get a teacher contract, and if they perform extra duties, they'll be issued a separate extra duty contract.
So there'll always be two contracts?
There'll always be two, or three, or more, depending on how many extra duties. We offer a, now we're doing, we're printing a separate contract for every extra duty.
Angie, will you turn your mic on? Thank you.
What would entail an extra duty, just to give an example?
Team leader, department chair.
Lego lead.
Lego, yes. Lego lead coach, math counts coach, anything outside of your regular teaching responsibilities that will be reflected in the supplemental pay at the back of the contract.
I have a question regarding upcoming terminate, or layoffs.
Yes.
Yeah.
Budget.
Considering the status of the budget, what's likely to happen, I think by April, or, yeah, by the end of this month, right?
April 30th is the deadline that we will need to issue layoff notices, if that is the case. Jay, do you want to speak at all to our conversation?
Sure. Yeah, we are working diligently, as you know, but it is really tough right now to approve a budget. Matter of fact, I was at Rotary today, and the table of gentlemen I was sitting with right away said, "How do you do a budget when you do not know?" And I said, "Boy, very carefully." And so, right now, we are really looking at what I would call levels of cuts, which is really a horrible phrase, but it is what it is. And so, we're just looking and saying, "Well, if we get this much money from the state, then here's what it looks like. If we get this much money from the state," as you know, we guess, we speculate it'll be somewhere between 0% and 2.63, or something like that. So we just, we have categories, and we're just trying to look at that, and each one, unfortunately, even the best-case scenario still means that there would be cuts to the budget. And so, we're just trying to look at that. We have, and when I say levels of cuts, we say, "Well, maybe at the elementary level we would cut, you know, two teachers, or three, or whatever it would be." And so, we look, the process really requires us to look at the number of retirements, or people that would be resigning perhaps because they're moving, or, you know, for whatever reason. So looking at that, and trying to make sure that we have the spots. If there's a question, we will probably honestly, as will every district in the state of Iowa, will probably have to go ahead and give a pink slip, or a RIF, a reduction in force form, and then hoping you would not need that. That's really never our best case. We prefer not to do that. It can take a hit on, you know, staff morale, and it's just never good to see somebody get a form. And so, we are looking at that very carefully. We want to make sure, though, that we are fiscally responsible, and unfortunately, it is part of the process to keep your staffing at the levels that you can afford. You know, we certainly want to keep people in the classrooms, and that is, you know, we're looking at everything other than that first, and then, just making sure that we're safe until we know, you know, until such time when we know what the budget will be for the state, so.
And the nature of state law requires us to serve notice by April 30th.
Right.
Because otherwise, those individuals are on a continuing contract. So there's no way we could, at the end of the year, once we know what the budget is, say, "Oh, by the way, we do, or we don't need you."
Right.
We have to do it by April 30th.
Right.
So is your baseline funding, your targeting with RIF, is it 1.25, or is it zero?
Zero.
Zero.
It's zero. And it's really that safety, I mean, if we do, if they are not able to reach an agreement, it does go to zero, so we prepare for the worst and hope for everything but that. And we're, and we're working, you know, carefully, we have to appreciate the Waterloo Education Association, and talking with them, there's several members here, but we've been talking with them all along. They have been helpful in, if someone is going to retire, or they know that they're going to go, if they would, you know, maybe as a professional courtesy, let us know before the 30th, it sure helps us in our planning, if they know that they're going to go anyway, resign, you know, earlier versus later, just because it really does help us in our planning. And we appreciate, you know, all the help that they have given us in that area. So, in addition to that, Bev is talking with several people, with principals, and just going through and saying, you know, "Let's take a peek at, you know, is there anybody that you know is, you know, perhaps a spouse got transferred, and so they might be leaving." So we're just, we're really looking at that. It is, it's unfortunate, and it is not what we want to do, but it is what we have to do in this case, so.
Thank you.
Anything further? Alright, so, with item C, then, all those in favor of approving the personnel appointments and adjustments as listed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Move on to item D, which is on page 10 of our agenda. The Board of Education approved the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings. Thanks, Sue, and second, Mike. And any discussion?
And just before discussion, I'll abstain from voting on this item, because as an attorney, I represent a client that's paid by one of the bills.
Great. So all those in favor of approving the bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in abstention?
Abstain, yes.
Chair votes aye, motion carries with one abstention. Thank you. And, our last item that was pulled is item E, which is on page 18. I will get that motion on the table, that the Board of Education accept and acknowledge the Waterloo Human Rights Commission donation in the amount of $5,000. Thanks, Angela.
I'll second.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, ladies.
Hello.
Want to tell us a little bit about this?
I will let Ms. Winters, because this is her fun project.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Winters.
Basically, Abraham Funches is Solomon's dad, who happens to be in our BPA chapter, and he came to me and said, "I was wondering, you know, if you guys could use a donation." I'm like, "Yes, definitely." So, very excited, they have offered to kind of do a scholarship donation towards BPA this year, of $5,000, and that will really help. You know, we've got 17 students and two adults all going to Nationals, and so, we really could use that money. So, any questions? I can answer from that.
How much do you fundraise?
We've raised at least, I would say, 7,500, and we've got a t-shirt fundraiser going on right now, so we're really working on it. And I think we have gone through the process to get donation letters out there in the community, so I'm hoping we'll get more as the next couple of weeks. But we're leaving May 4th, so.
It's coming right up.
What do you call it, or what do you need to do?
Honestly, it's about $1,000 a person, so, that's what we're at.
So about 19 total?
Yeah.
Gotcha. And if people do want to help, is it just, what's best, contacting the school, contacting West High?
Yeah, you can contact West High, and you can talk directly to me. Make sure that anything, if you do send a check or anything like that, they should route it to West BPA, and then liken care of me, or the BPA chapter at West, so greatly appreciate anything.
Great, and we'll be sure to give a shout out to Abraham Funches, too, for his.
Yes, very nice donation, we can really appreciate that.
Yes, make sure you pass that along, so.
Yes.
Anything further? Thanks for being here tonight.
No problem. Thank you.
With that, all those in favor of approving the donation for the Waterloo Human Rights Commission to BPA, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. So the next item on our agenda, we've been talking a lot about it tonight, is the 2015-2016 budget estimate and publication, which is on page 23 of our board exhibit. And I will get that recommended motion, is that the Board of Education certify and adopt the 2015-16 budget with maximum expenditures of $164,156,604, and property tax levy rate of 15.62432, as presented.
I'll so move.
Thanks, Mike, and a second.
Sorry.
Thank you, the motion's on the table, I'm going to turn it over to Michael Coughlin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to point out, if you noticed in between the publication and the final exhibit, that it did go down a little bit, the line 36 of total expenditures. It went down 62,000, because I had picked up the wrong line on the bond payment, and it was actually a little lower than what I had initially put in. So, everything else stays the same, it was just the payment of the bond schedule reduced by 62,000. So that's why what we published and what is presented to you tonight is a little different number, but the tax rate is the same, that doesn't change. Just to review a little bit, we had quite an extensive discussion about the budget, and how we were addressing it at the last meeting, had the PowerPoint and so on. And then, at that time, the board had approved a preliminary tax rate and total expenditures for the budget, and that was published in the Courier in the last week of March, which then puts us on timeline of approving the budget tonight, and it has to be turned into the county auditor by the 15th. So, that works out well with our schedule. As we've been speaking, it's not set, because the legislature has not agreed on the number, and as you know, the Republicans are at 1.25% SSA, or allowable growth, and the Democrats came down to 2.625, and that does have a significant difference in our budget. But until that's known, we have prepared the budget on the 1.25 level, and like Dr. Lindeman said, we have been doing preliminary review of meeting that budget under zero, just in case, worst-case scenario. Again, when that is settled by the legislature and the governor, that will change things automatically. But in the case that I was speaking about last time, because all of the increases have been basically taken by the state, they don't pass it on to the taxpayers, our levy could change a few pennies, but it shouldn't change much more than that, because all of the increase will go into the state budget. But we will have the opportunity to review that when it's settled, and we've done that before in the last few years, where sometime in late May, or even in June, it's come back before the board with the final numbers, just to say, "Are you okay with that? Do you want to adjust?" And again, we can always adjust down, but we can't adjust up. The expenditures could go up automatically if we get more money from the legislature. So those things are done automatically. So we will wait and see. Just a reminder that the tax rate that we had last year, that we published and approved last year was $15.97, and this year's tax levy rate is dropping 35 cents, down to $15.62. So with that, it's kind of a, meet the requirements of the law and approve it, and then have another review of it when the legislature finally comes to a resolve, and then it will be locked in, but we have the opportunity to do that.
Any questions for Mr. Coughlin?
I would just note that it's somewhat helpful, we're up 142 students.
Yes.
This coming year, and that follows 189 students last year. So, the increasing enrollment is somewhat helpful.
Yes, very much.
And I just want to say thank you to you and your staff, I know, and Dr. Lindeman, for putting together a budget without really knowing, you know, I know it's a difficult task, so I appreciate that, and I know we're all waiting for some action, so, hopefully.
Yeah, I would echo both of those comments as well, and I've been trying to read the tea leaves a little bit, just to see what's going on in the legislature. I don't know, I haven't heard anything recently that anybody's any closer, at least here, over the last week or so. It sounds like it may even be a few more weeks. I think the legislature, the session's over, or they run out of, they're per diem on May 1st?
May 1st.
If it is. That's actually not that far away, so.
No.
Something's got to give sooner or later, but we'll see.
Or if not, we'll be at zero.
Yeah.
So.
Find out.
Let's hope not for that.
Yes.
So thanks, Michael.
You're welcome.
All that said, then, all those in favor of approving the 2015-2016 budget estimate and publication, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. And that concludes our action items for this evening, so let's move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Lindeman?
Absolutely. I actually am going to just really address one thing tonight, maybe just mention a couple others, but I would like to use the majority of my time to really talk about it, just an interesting thing that has come up over the last couple of weeks, I guess. If people read in the Waterloo Courier, there was an article recently about a book challenge in Waterloo schools. And so, the article, I thought, was quite misleading, and so I'm actually going to use this platform right now to just share just a couple of comments that I feel are really important. I've debated for quite some time, most of the weekend, trying to figure out what is the best way to get information out to people, and so I'm going to, I'm going to definitely use this opportunity right now, so just to give a little insight. When we are determining books, and curriculum, and resources, there are actually two levels of scrutiny, and so, we have school board policies for a reason, and they are extremely helpful, and every time something happens, we really do go to the policy to see what guidance is there. We always hope for best-case scenario, that it's extremely clear, and we can just follow the print. There are times when that, you know, you don't even realize it's unclear until an issue arises, and then that gives you an opportunity, and we look at it as an opportunity to kind of straighten things out. So, in this case, what we determine is really there were two levels of scrutiny that we use when we're deciding content in books, especially books that have sexual content and profanity. And that is addressed in policy 603.6R1. So the first level of scrutiny is really on the educators, Waterloo schools educators, or any other educators, but in this case, certainly us. So there's two levels of scrutiny. The first one says that we would prefer, that we ask the educators to look at the content and make some decisions. First of all, is it, hopefully, they can find something that is free of sexual content and profanity. That's always our first preference, and it's clear in the policy, that is preferred. And the second thing, that if that isn't the case, and the literary value is so, or historical value, but the literary value is so strong that it kind of outweighs the sexual and profanity, or the sexual content and profanity, then we do, then we may proceed with it. And so, but we do ask that the instructors would explain why this material would be considered pertinent, and how it supports curriculum requirements. So, that's really helpful to know, because really, that first level scrutiny is on us as educators, to make sure that we are thinking about kids first, and making decisions that are wise, and in the best case, the best interest of children. So when that portion of the policy has been followed, then, the public certainly has the right to challenge. If we looked at, if we looked at all of that, and we said, "You know what, we understand that it's controversial for a particular reason, but we absolutely believe this is the right thing to do, because the learning experience really does outweigh any of the issues." So, in this particular case, with the book, we actually determined that that first level of scrutiny was not followed. The book that was being used, was being used with students who were under 14, the book clearly, in every realm that I looked at, you can peruse any website, even the Council of Teachers of English have said, really, it should be 14 or above, and most people have said high school. And we use it in our high school, and I think it, you know, is valid for that reason. That was the first level, and then the text was not being used without the explanation. There was really no checks and balances that had happened, unfortunately, that was the case. And that parents, we do ask that parents would be notified, just that it's being used, something that's controversial would be used. And that doesn't mean that we won't use it, but those are the things. So, in this case, the first level of scrutiny had not been followed. So, I think that the article in the paper really focused on the second level of scrutiny, assuming, they assumed that the first level had been covered, and it really hadn't. So the second level scrutiny comes when there's a disagreement about the particular book being used, and the public can certainly challenge it. If the book was deemed as age-appropriate, when it was determined that the literary content outweighed any concerns, and when the educator had followed the process of explaining that, then, you know, we would, then we would say that we probably should pull a committee together. Matter of fact, the policy requires that, we would pull a group together, and the policy is extremely clear about who should be on that committee, and we, and how we would look at that. So, in this case, it really was a situation of a double, a double policy, a double scrutiny, and the first case wasn't, it wasn't scrutinized at the first level, and so the second, we never even got to the second level. So, I just, I think that's interesting. I have determined that, it's amazing that there, you know, for as many people there as there are in the world, that's probably how many opinions there are. I have not heard from a lot of people, but even since this happened, I've heard from about, oh, I would say maybe, maybe 10 people, and right now, the count is pretty much even, five people saying, "I'm really happy that you made the choice you did," and then five people saying, "What were you thinking?" So, you know, it's really interesting to me, and another example is, I got a couple emails from people. One of them said, "I agree with you, I do think parents should be aware of this, so that we can be part of the process." And then I got an email from somebody else who was just on the flip side, and said, "You know what, I think that I trust educators enough that I do give them, we trust them implicitly, and if they determine that that really is the best thing, then who am I to say, because I'm not the teacher and they are?" So, can you see the spectrums of opinions from parents? It's been, it's been really interesting. One thing that I did realize in this position is, it is impossible to please all, and so you just do what you believe is right for kids, which is exactly what we did here. So, the final comments I would like to say on this is, I think it's, I did provide this to the paper, and they didn't print that, but I think that the good part here is that we did meet with the teachers involved, and really talked about the policy, and kind of explained to them what I've just explained to you and to the public. I think that was really important. Another thing, Dr. McNulty took the lead on this, but we really have reminded people about the policy, and that policies are there for a reason. So we sent that out and just said, you know, "If this or other books do contain profanity or sexual content, make sure that you are following policy," because it is really, it is pretty clear about what that first level of scrutiny is. And then, the third thing, just to make sure this, you know, we don't get into this situation again, we are actually going to review our book sets that we purchase, and just kind of do a general, a general review, and say, you know, "Here are things, and let's look at what grade level they're recommended for," and just kind of use that as a baseline, I think that will help. And then, the fourth thing that is just always a good thing, is that we are actually going to go back and revisit policy 603.6, just to take a look at the wording. There were a couple things that, you know, until this happened, we didn't even realize that it wasn't as clear as it should be. For example, it says that they should provide an explanation for, but it doesn't say "to whom." You know, and so we really do need to clear that up, because I don't know how staff members, whether it's a teacher, or an administrator, whoever it is, it has to be clearer than that. And so, when we wrote the policy, that's something that, you know, you have, we have a huge group of people that look at the policies, but sometimes you miss things, and this is probably one where we did miss that. So, we're going to go back and look at that, and, you know, talk about who's involved, and perhaps even, you know, if there's a particular form, or questions that should be answered as you're describing why that's the best thing to use. I think we can, I think we can hone in on that a little bit and firm it up. And so, you know, it's, the best-case scenario is that we learned from this, and that we're going to make things clearer for the next round, and I guess that, you know, that's just a little bit of explanation on that, so. And then, the other thing I would say, just on, not on the book anymore, but we have a series of leader-in-me, leadership, things going on in the, oh, was that yours? Shanley was going to bring it up. We, many of the buildings have leadership assemblies, and all kinds of things coming up, leadership days coming up, and so check our website, if you're interested in attending one of those, please make sure you do. I had the opportunity to go to Becker last week on, I think it was Thursday, and it was just a phenomenal experience, and I know there's one coming up at Orange, and I think there might be six or seven of them coming up. So, check the website, and if you are interested in seeing our kids in action, being leaders, it's a great opportunity, so. I guess that's it. Thank you.
There's a table actually listed, because I asked Pam to help me cheat, under press releases on our main website. releases on our main website, so you can go and look and see at what time each school is offering those, so, just in cases, so. And now it's time for information from board members, and I think I started with Lyle last time, so I'm going to start with Angie this week.
I feel like I always get to go first, but it's, it's okay.
You thought Lyle was going first? I never keep it right.
It's okay. I, the only thing that I have is just that I had an opportunity to, not participate, but partake in the debutante cotillion that Club La Danse puts on each year, and what an amazing thing that we have in our community, for 25 of our brightest, beautiful women with futures that are, that are outstanding, display from both of our high schools, and I don't know if there was anyone there from Expo, I don't remember seeing that, but for, from both east and from west, there's a GPA requirement, service requirement, a thing that they do year-long, and then this is just kind of their rites of passage, I am a woman, it's, it was just amazing to see them, I, I think I cried like 40 times, and I, I only know one of the kids. I graduated with two people's parents, but, so then I also knew that I was getting old.
Thanks Angela.
I was crying.
Sue Flynn?
I do not have any report tonight, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mike Young?
And I'm debating whether to get on my soapbox or not with the Courier and the coverage yesterday, with the book item, I will get on my soapbox here for a little bit. The book item that was in the paper last Tuesday, and I was frustrated by that with kind of the backstory, and from what I understand of the reporting that went on with that, but I was also disappointed yesterday, I thought it was in the editorial from the Courier, that I thought the level of scrutiny that came from that was a little bit misguided from the Courier. Now, I understand, I mess up, and our school district messes up as well, but I think what bothered me the most is, we've had the shoe on the other foot with the Courier, and that hasn't been there in the past. The thing that comes to mind the most is, a couple years ago, the Mike Wells situation in Cedar Falls, where the Waterloo District, we had, we started doing semi-annual reviews with the superintendent, with Dr. Morris, and we had one special session set up at a time where it had been, we had announced it six months prior, we announced it in June, I think we were having it in December, and the Courier wrote, and there was a story about how we were going to review Dr. Morris, I think with an M, the day before, we had the special meeting for review, that was on page three, the front page of the Metro section, and then there was a lengthy story following the review, the mid-year review the day after. Now, from that point in time, I think that was in December, I'm going off of memory, until February, again, we only had one special session for review, we got two stories in the Courier. At the same time, the Cedar Falls School Board had seven special sessions to, where they went into closed session to review personnel, and they had seven of them in that time, and actually, I think about a two-month time, they had three in five days, where they're going in to review Mike Wells, and ultimately, he resigned, I think, before he was fired. But, and the Courier had zero stories on that, at that time, and so, it's just, you kind of look at it, and, you know, I was frustrated yesterday when I read it, and I just thought, when the shoe's on the other foot, we don't see that, and I, I responded to Nancy Newhoff in Dayton, Dave called me afterwards, or sent me an email or called me, I'll have to check, and said, oh, don't worry, I went and checked with our Cedar Falls Education beat reporter, and she said she knew all the, knew they were having all these special sessions. Well, she should have known, because they have to announce them 24 hours in advance in the agenda, but he told me she knew about it, but just decided not to write about it, because she was just monitoring it. And so, it's a level of scrutiny that comes behind it, that as I'm now transitioning off the school board, I still, I have very mixed feelings, I guess, about the Courier, because I understand everybody messes up, and we do too. It's part of life, we're the largest school district in our media market, and so I think other districts deal with that as well. It still bothers me, and I'm still here talking about it on a beautiful night, so I'll stop talking about it so we can all go home. It's part of the deal, I don't think it's right, but it just, that's the way it works. That's my report tonight.
Thanks Mike, appreciate that. Andrea Sparks is actually out of town this evening, which is why she's not with us, so we'll be moving on to Mike Kinsey.
Well, my only comment with regards to the book issue would be to reiterate that the book is still in our libraries, it is still being used in the high school, it was taken away from children that didn't need to be around that kind of content, so I think it was the right move, regardless of what teachers and parents say about, you know, these kinds of rights, I think it's more important to keep kids away from bad influences in general, so, that's all I have.
Thanks Mike.
Two things, one, we can review any policy at any time, I, I know there's a timeline, but we can do that.
Absolutely.
Every five years.
And just to piggyback on what, what Mike had said, you know, we have a free press in this country, it's different than TV stations, because they're under some FCC guidelines, the press is under no guidelines. They can print whatever they want when they, when they feel like it, doesn't that be accurate? Doesn't that be true? Doesn't need to be a whole story? So I guess it's just a matter of ethics, that we would ask that both sides, the complete story as accurately as it can be, be reported, so, you know, sensationalizing, career-building for individuals, creating, creating the news, they're free to do that, I guess, and then all of us are just free to judge whether or not we want to purchase, purchase the Courier, but, but, I mean, that is the bottom line, we have a free press, they can print whatever they want to, without any, any consequences whatsoever, except public reaction to it. There's good and bad parts to that.
Yeah. Thanks Lyle. And lastly, I'd like to finish tonight with a piece of positive news that was also in the paper. Waterloo's four-year cohort graduation rate rose by nearly 4% this past year. We still have work to do, we aren't going to finish until, you know, 98.5% of our kids are graduating in four years, but I think that's a really positive thing, and I just want to point that out, because graduation is super important, so. The next time we will all be together will be two weeks from now, on April 27th, at our regular board meeting, and if there isn't anything further from anyone, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Also move?
Second.
Thanks, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor of adjourning the meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Meeting adjourned, thank you.